I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, June 17, 2021, to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, we've called the meeting to order at 7:00. Clerk Haley, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Marshauska.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
President's Report. I have a few things tonight. Number one is, I'd like a motion to appoint Kelly Navarro to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to fill a vacancy term to expire 2024. Kelly is a wonderful candidate, and I'm honored that she has taken us up on the opportunity to serve the village. So if I can have a motion in a second?
Motion made.
In a second. Trustee Evans first. Would you like to second? Thank you. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshauska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
I don't think Kelly's here tonight, so you'll take care of swearing her in later date. Okay, thank you. Second is, I'd like a motion to reappoint Kathy Maloney as Chairperson of the Landscape Advisory Commission, Elizabeth Cosse as Chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Board, Joe Mateo as Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jennifer Fournier as Chairperson of the Economic Development Commission, Charlie Piple as the Chairperson of the Preservation Commission, and Richard Julian as Chairperson of the Historical Commission. If I can have a motion, please?
Motion made.
Thank you. Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Trustee Pollak. Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshauska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
I'd like to thank all the chairpeople that have decided to continue on for another year for their commitment to our village. It's not an easy task, so I appreciate it. Third is, not on the agenda, but I'd like to announce the retirement of William W. Gutcheck, Deputy Chief from the Riverside Police Department. Deputy Chief Gutcheck has served in nearly every rank as a Riverside Police Department member. While also supervising the Riverside 911 Communication Center for 11 years, he is a member of the Illinois Impaired Driving Task Force, the West Suburban Major Crimes Task Force Forensic Team, the Juvenile Justice Commission, the Police Chief Steering Committee, and held past presidential positions on the Board of Trustees of the Police Pension Fund and the Riverside Police Benevolent Association for many years. Deputy Chief Gutcheck is to be commended for his years of commitment to duty, his honor to the law enforcement profession, and loyal to the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Police Department. Bill, we will wish you the best in a well-deserved retirement after serving our village with honor since 1988. Next is our manager's report.
Thank you, President Ballerine. I just have one item. Actually, I take that back. I have two items. One is, I just want to remind residents about our 5K run. Residents have been accustomed to it occurring on July 4th. It is occurring on June 26th. You can register online. If you have any questions, you can contact our Parks and Recreation Department. It is important to note that on the day of the race, you cannot register, which is a change from past practice. So I just want residents to be aware of that, and make sure you register if you intend on running by the deadline, which is June 23rd. And my second item is actually, I would like to welcome the new Assistant Village Manager, Ashley Monroe, to the Village of Riverside. Ashley started today, so she's kind of getting a crash course on the Village of Riverside and learning all that is wonderful about the village. And we welcome her. We're excited to have her. You'll see her at upcoming meetings, whether it's planning and zoning, or economic development, or preservation, or what have you. So welcome, Ashley, and we're excited to have you as a member of our team.
Ashley, could you stand up so everybody could see you?
Yes, good.
Thank you.
Please be here. Thank you very much.
Next is resident comments for non-agenda items. So would anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you would please give us your name and address.
My name is Marion Pirog. I live at 89 Lincoln, and I own an apartment building there in which I reside. I was driving, well, I drive through Riverside all the time, and I was particularly upset for several days, driving at night. I know the gas lights and everything else. I almost hit someone on a bicycle. I did not. There was no problems, but I was upset. They don't have lights on the back of their bicycles. They don't have any kind of marking on their jackets if they don't have lights. There is a state law stating that you are supposed to have lights. They don't. I would like the Village of Riverside to start initiating a watch by the police, have these people, or children, in fact, this was a child, dark clothes, et cetera, barely I think that they should be, if not ticketed, their parents should be warned. In fact, I was a school teacher, high school, for 34 years, and go to Riverside Brookfield High School, look at the bicycle rack, and find out why they're not lighted. The same thing goes with the schools. The children take bicycles. Someday, someone's going to kill a person on a bike at night, and it's very disturbing to me.
Thank you very much for your comment. We do have our Director of Public Safety in the room, and...
I called the police department this afternoon, and I was told by the officer who answered the phone that I should call up when I see this, report it to the police, so they can get into their cars and look for them. Trust me, the police department, the fire department in Riverside is excellent. I find no fault with them. But these children, these people need to have lights on. They also need to use hand signals and to stop at the stoplight on First Avenue when they ride across against traffic.
Nothing you say we can't agree with, and I appreciate that. And again, our Chief Buckley is in the back, and he will make sure that your concerns are reiterated to the police force. Thank you very much for taking time off coming tonight. Any other? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's John Havlicek.
Come to the podium, please.
My name's John Havlicek. I live at 44 West Avenue. I've lived there for about 19 years. It's in a floodplain, and basically, I'm here to ask for help. The people that live in the floodplain are in very bad financial situation, and I'm not just speaking for myself. We just learned about this a couple of weeks ago. My neighbor tried to sell her property. It's a town home. I share a wall with her. The assessment was like $225,000. She ended up getting $165 appraisal. 19 years ago, identical building, I'm right next door to her, I paid $159,900. These homes have not appreciated because of the two floods we've had. That's the only reason. When I moved in, people asked me, "Why are you moving there?" Because I knew Riverside. I lived a block east of Harlem. I was here all the time on my bike, playing ball in parks and stuff, going down Suicide Hill. That was a rite of passage. I don't know if some of you are old enough to remember that, but anyway, it's a scary situation. She accepted a bit of $185. The flood insurance went up to $3,200 a year. Okay? The people that were buying, the young couple, I mean, they qualified for a loan to purchase the property at the price, you know, she accepted. They didn't know about the flood insurance. When they found out, they pulled out of the deal. She can't move. She can't rent the place because her insurance would go through the roof. It wouldn't be owner-occupied anymore. It's a bad situation. You know, we've been talking about this berm for quite a while, and I get different answers from everybody I talk to, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. There were some surveyors out there this year. They were supposed to get started. It always seems like the rug gets pulled out from under us. I'd like to know what we can do about it. I mean, I'd be willing to do something too, but you know, you don't know where to go. I'm sure you're doing what you can, but you know, when you buy property, you think it's going to appreciate, you know? And I'm not a kid anymore, so you know, I've been semi-retired, and when I do decide to sell, if I can't sell, then it's kind of like, well, just give the house back to the bank. You know, I paid a mortgage for 19 years, and so does everybody else. You know, you don't see many foreclosures in that area, you know, on West Avenue. I talked to another Realtor about this flood insurance, and she sort of chuckled, and she said that she's trying to list a home right now, the same area, a single family, $5,200 for flood insurance. You know, that's over $400 a month. I don't know how people can afford it. I don't know if her deal's going to go through. I guess my question is, how can we expedite this? You know, like I said, I know everyone's trying, but it goes from one, you know, I've heard, well, the Olmsted Society's got to do something, the state's got to do something, the county's got to do something. You know, how do we get this all together? And I'm sure you've been trying, you know? I mean, I'm, you know, it's frustrating, and I'm sure other people in the neighborhood have come to meetings before, and I haven't, because I didn't know the property values have dropped that much. I know the condos have. 12 years ago, the kids next door bought a condo for $169. This year, the same one sold for $123. You know, my neighbor had 25 Lookers in about a week at her place. Everyone said, "Well, the river." When I moved in, the buildings there hadn't flooded yet. You know, when the guys replaced the floor in my house the first time, the contractor said, "No, it never flooded down here." They could tell by the beams, you know, there are no water marks or anything. But when they said it was a 100-year flood, they weren't kidding. You know, it came right through my trapdoor. I happened to be there. It's like I tried to stop the river with towels, but it didn't work. So anyway, I don't want to be, you know, crying on your shoulder, but you know, we got to do something. And I just like, any ideas, any help, just, you know, what can we do about it? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havlicek.
I've owned my building for over, as I said, let's say, 45 years. Before we purchased it, I called up the Village of Riverside, and I was told we hadn't had a flood in 100 years, and we were not in the floodplain. Now we're in the floodplain. I live on Lincoln, which is the second street from the river. We paid, I can't remember if I paid $2,000 my share to have the berm reestablished, but I thought there was a meeting a couple of months ago where the United States, what is it?
Army Corps of Engineers?
Pardon me?
The Army Corps of Engineers?
We're supposed to start work on it. What happened?
We're, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the board has authorized to start the design phase, but we haven't fully committed to the final step, which would be designed with engineering to then build. So we're piecing the process so that we can get appropriate feedback from different commissions and also working directly with Army Corps of Engineers, and then also the property owners adjacent to that. We can't really talk about procurement of easement or property yet, simply for the fact that we haven't received final authorization, that the village wants to move forward with actually building the project. So it's multifaceted in that respect.
Would the property owners also have to pay for this?
Pardon?
Would the property owners also have to pay for this?
This is, this is all grant-funded currently. This is a grant-funded project. So the village has received grant funding through Metropolitan Water Reclamation District for the villages portion, which is 25% of the project, and Army Corps of Engineers would pay for 75, up to a certain established amount, and I don't know the number off the top of my head.
You said the village would pay 25%. Where would they get that money from?
We already received a grant. We already received a grant. So it's not, at this point, as long as the village does move forward with it, we wouldn't have to reimburse Metropolitan Water Reclamation District for our portion of the cost. If we decide not to move forward, then the village would ultimately have to reimburse them for that cost.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but even with the building of the berm, flood insurance would still be required?
Yes.
This will not remove the landowners from a floodplain?
At this point, Army Corps of Engineers cannot make a commitment that those properties or properties would be removed from the floodplain. So, you know, they would submit and see whether or not, because of different elevations, right now, as it stands on its face, it would not be a certified levy. Would it ease the burden as it relates to flooding and mitigating those issues? Yes. But as it stands, based on recent surveying that they've done, they haven't finalized their surveying, but it would not be a qualifying levy at this point in time.
Mr. Havlicek.
I don't even pay flood insurance. I don't get much water, but I get about that much. I'm on the ground floor, but I don't know.
Mr. Havlicek?
Give us a new timetable.
Please, sir, to the podium.
The only thing I have to add is that if the berm is built, I would think that the cost of flood insurance should be affected, and I'm sure it'd be dropped, or not dropped completely. We're still in the floodplain. I mean, no one can predict this.
I can't predict that, but yes.
You know, I know that, but it only makes sense, doesn't it? If we're safer, why would they charge that much? But you know, I'm in good shape, because we're grandfathered into it. The new people are trying to move in. They're the ones that are stymied, okay?
Thank you, sir. We move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. The approval-voucher list of bills for June 17, 2021, the approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting minutes, May 20 and June 3, 2021, review and file community development, finance, fire, police, and public work department may monthly reports. Does anybody have any items they require to be removed? If not, can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion made.
Motion, Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second, Trustee Pollak. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshauska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. On to Board and Commission reports. Do we have any Board and Commission reports tonight?
I do, actually.
Kathy Maloney, let's have it.
Oh, go ahead. Did you have something? Oh, go ahead.
Kathy Maloney is our Chair of the LAC, who was reappointed tonight. Thank you, Kathy, for agreeing to do that.
Thank you for reappointing me. I'm here today to ask you to reconsider a decision that was made at the last Village Board meeting regarding mowing in the Swan Pond area. I understand that the decision was made largely for cost purposes, to reduce the cost of mowing that had increased because of the bumper crop of dandelions that we had. The LAC is preparing essentially a white paper to describe for you the various reasons we'd like you to reconsider that vote, and we will have that by the end of this month. In the meantime, I want to give you just some highlights that would be in that memo. Answer what questions I can, and understand from you what questions you would like us to research in addition. I think you know the background of Swan Pond. Perhaps some of you, I'll just give this little refresher. Initially, when Riverside was founded, it was a very naturalistic area. In fact, it had an Oxbow stream that you can see on the map that came out from the river and then reconnected. We can see from pictures of that area that it was left naturalistic. Since that time, in the past 150 years we've been a village, there have been numerous changes to the topography and also to the river itself. Most recently, there's been a lot of increased flooding due to changes in the weather patterns, increased rainfall, and et cetera. So in 2017, the Village Board asked the LAC to look into ways to landscape that area to help with the flooding, and as a result of that, we recommended a consulting firm that came in and recommended the first area to be planted with native plants, that are wetland plants that essentially try to retain the water and therefore remove it from being a big soggy pond. The Board approved that. That included tail-end maintenance of the initial plantings. So in 2017, the village and numerous volunteers hand-planted 10,000 plants in that area, and I have the torn meniscus to show you that a number of volunteers helped to do that. We've been monitoring those plantings for the past four years. We've learned what works and what doesn't. There have been maintenance costs associated with that to get a professional firm in there. And we had made an agreement with, we being the LAC, with the Public Works Department that mowing would continue this summer. Last summer, it was not possible to do because of the pandemic and shortage of supplies and so forth, shortage of resources. I want to make a distinction. We were all thrilled that the Board, at the last meeting, made comments that they liked the natural look. We love the natural look. But there should be a distinction between a wild landscape and a managed natural area. Most natural areas that you see are not wild. They are managed. There's a management plan in place. Otherwise, what you have, or what will result, is a bunch of invasive plants and noxious weeds. Those are special terms. They're ecological terms. They're botanical terms. Honestly, until I started studying the matter, I would look at one plant and another and couldn't tell the difference. Couldn't tell you a weed from a native plant from a non-native plant. I suspect many people, when they look in Swan Pond, would say, "Nice green area, like it," and don't know, nor do they need to know, weed, noxious plant, et cetera. But if we do not mow, we will get, because of the river, because it's close to the river, we will get an influx guaranteed of invasive plants. The mowing, although it's a monoculture and ecologically not, you know, in vogue right now, keeps down the weeds, keeps down the invasive plants. So that has been, that was the intent of the design that was done in 2017, was to keep that one area, the wettest area with native plants managed, and then lawn. It's consistent with Olmstedian design, and quite frankly, it was an investment. One of the things I have to double-check is the dollar amount, but I want to say in the area of $30,000, with initial maintenance costs of $2,000 to $4,000 per growing season. I think when you decided, obviously, there are cost constraints. You have to triage and figure out what can get mowed and what can't, but it's not clear to me that you had the time to do a cost-benefit analysis that would be needed to decide what gets mowed, what does not. So I bring this up now. Again, I say that we will have a detailed paper for you by the end of this month. Excuse me. I would ask that you consider reversing the decision to mow or not mow Swan Pond, at least in the next interim, before you can see our paper, before the plants get too high in the unmowed area, and then take a look at our paper and decide, you know, what you want to do.
Thank you. Trustee Pollak?
Really appreciate Chairperson Maloney coming here and clarifying that. I think we may have had a failure to communicate amongst ourselves. When I said I wanted it to go wild, to go native, I didn't mean ignore it. I meant exactly what Chairperson Maloney is just saying. Let's manage it to make it a natural, native landscape. So I look forward to the LAC's report, and I would hope that this Board would clarify our decision that we made at the previous meeting at that time.
I would similarly clarify that when I was in agreement with Trustee Pollak at that meeting, I was thinking exactly the same thing he was, that it would be a managed wild area as opposed to a completely...
Let it all loose.
Right, right. We just appreciate so much the vistas that have been created there. It would be a shame to see them, you know, go to waste, particularly after the investment.
Yeah, it definitely was not my intent either for us to just mow it or let it grow wildly. As, you know, a member of the commission for a time, I understood, and I knew how much work that you had put, your commission and Michael had put into the Swan Pond garden, and I don't remember actually even talking about mowing the Swan Pond, but if we had, that would have been a mistake. So I agree with Doug and Aberdeen that, you know, thank you for coming in, and I agree that we need to be more mindful of the area.
Trustee Hannan? I'm just confused. Is this a commission report? This is a commission report. Okay, so there's no vote pending? Correct. I think what we, we all tend to agree with what you're saying, but I think where we need to go now is we need to get your paper, and so we can look it over, discuss it with our Public Works Director and our forester, and see the best way we can do to manage the property properly.
The one concern is, is if you all don't meet until July 15, is it?
Mm-hmm.
It will be, I think, too late to mow. The stuff will be too high.
It has been mowed this year.
They did an initial mowing, and they did some paths, but if you go down there now, you'll see, in what was traditionally a mowed area is not mowed.
But we did mow it in 2020, correct?
I do not believe we did in 2020.
But we mowed it in 2021. So we did mow it at the beginning of this year, so it actually went wild for a year and was able to mow. If I'm correct.
From what I understand...
So my point would be that four weeks or three weeks wouldn't...
I don't know. I did ask Dan, the Director of Public Works, about that, like, what, is it hard to mow after winter, because by then you'd have all the growth? is it hard to mow after winter? Because by then you'd have all the growth and whatnot? And he said, well, winter smashes it down, and so it's not hard to do it.
Dan, do you want to speak?
Come on up. Oh, I want to also invite up Julie. Julie Shafe is another commissioner who has been looking into this matter.
Go ahead, Dan.
So I can speak on behalf of what we've done over the last, let's say, year and a half. Last year, we did mow to the flooding. Swan Pond in the fall was what we all saw. I believe everyone got an opportunity to see what it looked like. Over the course of the winter, the snow flattens down the grass. Early spring, before everything started blooming, we did a refresh mow, took everything down to grade, and then it began growing. We had the meeting. It was discussed to allow the pond to go natural. We continued with the paths that we had cut through the area last fall. And we also cut a path around the intentionally planted area in 2017 to provide a barrier from what would be considered potentially invasive to the managed area. And that's where it sits as of right now.
Okay, the question is, if we waited to get the paper from LAC and had the report discussed with, you know, yourself and, and Forester Collins, would that be too late to cut the grass if that was the decision? Or I don't, or is, are we even, I mean, what is, what is managed? I don't, I don't, I don't know what managed natural areas. Is that cutting the grass? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That seems like that's cutting the grass.
There, well, there's several elements that you can do to manage a natural area. Mowing is one.
Right.
Another is what we've been doing with the Swan Pond planted area, the wetland area, which is having an ecological restoration firm come in, I think, once every two months, three months?
They come about three to four times a year.
Three to four times a year to hand pull, burn as necessary, and apply herbicide as necessary. So, and that's for a small area. That's like 3/4 of an acre versus the total of four plus acres. And those are some ways to manage a natural area. There is many others, which include volunteer help and many things.
Okay, well, I would, personally, I would like to see the plan before we, before we make a decision, but that's, that's my, that's my, my two cents.
And I would say that the white paper will not be able to give you dollars and cents necessarily of how to manage the entire Swan Pond, because we'd have to get bids.
Well, that's why we have, if, but this is the time to do it, so we can start working on our budget. And we have staff that can help us figure out the costs.
Which we can do, but at this point, mowing is the cheapest solution to manage that area. What we want to do, well, I don't want to get into all the specifics and take your time, but you put at risk the area that was planted, the wetland area, if we can call it that. You put that at risk, because when the plants bloom and set to seed and all that kind of stuff, you'll get more invasives in there, which will cost you more to manage that particular area. The other thing I'm concerned about is what will grow in that area. You have kids running, as I did when I was little, never mind the paths. You have kids running into the area. I don't know what's in there. I know parsley could be in there. Well, parsley, not parsley. Help me, Mary. Well, yeah, lots of things can, can be in there. Poison ivy can be in there. There's a number of things that could be in there that a kid could run into. So I would say it was not our intent to cost out all the different managed ways you can manage a natural area that would involve getting bids and all that. We weren't going to prepare for you that. We can give you generally this, you know, ranking is, is cheaper, whatever. But I can tell you, absolutely the cheapest way to do that, to manage it right now, manage invasives, is to mow. And from what I understand from Dan, correct me if I'm wrong again, is that, and I don't think you asked this at the last meeting, it takes 3/4 of a, of a man day, of a workday, to mow Swan Pond. That's six hours. Now, you can do that, now, I'm glad you're here, because you can do that every week. Perhaps you can do it every other week and save 50%. Mowing is going to be the cheapest. If we want to look at other ways of doing it, we sure can. I can't get that done for you by the end of this month.
Trustee Pollock?
So, just to try to wrap this up, at the last, at a previous board meeting, we made a decision. This board made a decision that, however you want to word it, I think the term I might have used was, we want a natural look. We've, three of us have clarified what we meant by that here tonight. Nothing's changed, assuming there's a fourth that agrees with that clarification. So I would suggest staff is empowered to proceed with whatever's necessary right now to make sure that that is a natural area as originally intended. Now, I would love to revisit it, but if anything needs to be done between now and our next meeting, or whenever LAC has their report, I think staff, in my opinion, is empowered to take those steps, whether it's mowing or something else, based on the clarification of that previous decision we've made tonight. Does that-
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maloney. We look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I should just mention, neither I nor Julie are available for your next meeting. So I, if you have questions on the report, you're free to call me, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Trustee Ozga, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
Oh, yes. I attended the Preservation Commission meeting last week on June 10th. And I just wanted to update the board and the public, anyone who's interested on the additional status with respect to the Groveland Levy discussion. So back in April, April 8th, the Preservation Commission considered some alternate designs proposals, made some recommendations to the design that had been presented by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And at the end of that April meeting, the decision was that we would prepare a memo for this Board of Trustees to consider, to further inform our decision-making process and how we wanted to, to go forward or not go forward with the project. For whatever reason, the draft, you know, made it into certain discussions and didn't make it into other discussions, and still never made it into this board. But we, at the last Preservation Commission meeting, the June meeting, there was a deliberate ratification of that draft memo. So the draft memo is ready to come to the full board, so you can all see it at whatever time. And the next step, as we understand it from there, is that the village will coordinate with the Army Corps as to when the 106 process is going to be initiated. Because the Army Corps has represented that the 106 process will happen. The Chair of the Preservation Commission, Charlie Piple, has been in communication with the State Historic Preservation Agency. And they have confirmed that a Section 106 process must happen, that that process involves notification of all interested parties, including the National Parks Service, the State Historic Preservation Agency, all governmental agencies that would be of interest and interested parties locally. So that has to happen. And then, I guess, at this point, you know, once we, as a board, decide to move it forward to the Army Corps, then the timing of when that 106 happens is in the Army Corps' court. So I just thought I would bring everyone up to speed on that. If you have any questions about where that sits, what's happening, we can address them, or Manager Francis can address them.
Sure, just to piggyback a little bit on those statements. It will be in the next packet, because Preservation didn't have their meeting until Thursday, a week ago. And so we had, we were already well on our way on putting together this packet. But with regard to the Section 106 and our conversations with Army Corps of Engineers, it's while they're, based on the feedback that we got from Preservation from the past two meetings, there was a, an additional subsequent rendering that we've created based on that feedback that seems to be more in alignment with what Preservation was looking for. It's by no means finalized, but we have presented that to Army Corps of Engineers. Army Corps, how they work for the Section 106 is they essentially bring to Illinois Historic Preservation Office the least expensive option. As Trustee Marshazga mentioned, they do have to go through two different processes, one being the archaeological, which they have done, but that now they have to redo, and the architectural. And so there's two different pieces of this. And as she said, Preservation, the Preservation Chair is working very closely with the state office as they facilitate this. And so hopefully, we'll be able to get some additional feedback and some guidance and direction as to the next steps. There is additional surveying that needs to be done. And with that, we hope to put up the line to show, generally speaking, the elevation levels. But we need to do additional surveying and then also engineering. So there will be more to come, but essentially, everything she said, it's, it's a longer process. And obviously, we need to make sure that we're going through this process to ensure our resources here in the village are protected, so.
Thank you, Trustee Ozga. Thank you, Manager Francis. Pending business, the presentation of the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFR. Director Johns, can you walk us through this 395-page report?
I also have Tim Gavin from Lauderbach &amp; Amon, our third-party auditors, that he will help walk us through it as well. On an annual basis, state statute requires the village to conduct an audit of their financial statements. The board has entered into a five-year agreement with Lauderbach &amp; Amon, of which this is the fourth of that contract. After this board meeting, the treasurer's report will be published in the local newspaper, and the report will be filed with the state comptroller by the end of June. While 2020 was a very difficult year with unpredictable, unpredictable revenue streams, I am very happy to say that the general fund ended with a net revenue of $596,503 before transfers in and out. So with that, I'm going to invite Tim up to go over the statements.
Thanks, Karen, and thanks for having me here this evening. It's wonderful to be back in person. So as, as she mentioned in her, in her very good summary, we have completed the audit for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2020. And we're here to present the Comprehensive Annual Report. I'm just going to touch on a few highlights of the report document itself, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have. But before I get into the report, I just want to express our gratitude for, you know, the working relationship we have with Karen and her team. We are, I like to say, professional nuisances. So to deal with our requests and, and the process while getting the day-to-day done is, is no small feat. So we, we certainly appreciate that. Again, as you mentioned, it was an odd year for you and everyone. So commendations are certainly helpful. And the first one I'm going to point out is on page nine of the report. For a number of years now, the village has issued a comprehensive report and submitted it to the GFOA for their reporting certificate program. So the certificate presented in this report is for last year's report. And we fully expect this year's report to also earn the certificate, which will be, once it's submitted and reviewed. The next thing I want to point out is immediately following that, a few divider pages later, it's the only page with our letterhead on it and effectively the product of our work. It's page 10, titled "The Independent Auditor's Report." At the bottom of the page is where we officially issue our unmodified opinions, also known as a clean audit opinion, to the highest level of assurance that we are allowed to give. Essentially means that, based on our testing and sampling of transactions and account balances, that the report is materially correct. In addition to reviewing transactions, we also take a high-level look at the internal controls and processes that, that generate the transactions and produce this report. Immediately following the auditor's report on page 12 is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. I know I've mentioned this before. If you don't read anything else in this report, read that section. It lays out in mostly layman's terms how the report is structured, discusses some financial highlights, some key points, and does a comparison of this year's numbers to last year's numbers, provides some narrative explanation on why those numbers have changed. So a lot of effort goes into making this a nice, useful section, and pretty much tells you almost everything you need to know. In terms of specific highlights, I'll just mention a few key ones. I typically look at the balance sheet of the governmental funds on pages 32 and 33. That's most of your operations from a, you know, near-term budget standpoint. And the village did report a total positive fund balance of about $5.4 million, of which a vast majority is unrestricted, which means you don't have any third parties telling you how to spend those funds. A couple pages later is effectively the income statement for those same funds. And overall, the village did see a decrease in its governmental funds, fund balance of about $493,000. The general fund, though, which houses most of the operations, did see an increase of just over $100,000. The other portion of the village's operations, being the, the business-type activities, so water and sewer and parking lot, those results are found starting on page 38. And I'll, I'll actually direct you to page 40, which is the income statement for those funds. Overall, the business-type activities did see an increase in equity of about $844,000, most of which is in water and sewer. Parking lot did see a decrease in equity, which has been very, very common under the circumstances you saw in 2020. Following that is a number of pages of notes, which I won't go through in detail, but if you find yourself short on sleep, comes in very useful. Following that is some, some budget comparison statements, as well as the last section I'm going to point out, which is the statistical section. And that starts on page 132. And I won't point out anything in particular, just direct you, if you're interested in analyzing over a 10-year period where the village has been financially and how it's gotten to where you're at now, both in terms of financial results, its ability to raise and collect revenue, issuing and pay off debt, some demographic and economic information, as well some operating statistics. So it's just a very useful section of the report. And the, one aspect of issuing this comprehensive report is the voluntary assembly and reporting of this information, which is not technically required, but it's part of what leads the village to earn the certificate for excellence. At this point, that's all the, the items I wanted to point out in particular. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustees? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept the CAFR?
Motion made.
Motion made by Trustee Galagos, second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Pollock. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock?
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga?
Aye.
Trustee Galagos?
Aye.
Trustee Hanna?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen, for your dedicated work on this. We appreciate it. Next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to approve a change order for not to exceed the amount of $9,450 for additional design and engineering and permitting required for the shoreline stabilization, stabilization element of the Swan Pond walking path reconstruction project. Director Tapp?
I will just basically summarize the point behind this change order. On September 3, 2020, the Board received a cost estimate of $475,500 for the Swan Pond Walking Path Reconstruction Project. The estimate presented at the time did not include costs associated with shoreline stabilization. During the design phase of the project, shoreline stabilization was identified as being necessary to prevent future erosion along the walking path. The Village engineer, their design incorporates the use of limestone ledge rock, approved by the Board in previous meetings, to reinforce the areas susceptible to the erosion. And the change order reflects costs associated with additional design and required permitting for the limestone rock shoreline stabilization. I will note, of the $9,400, approximately $2,000 is for a permit that's required when you do work along the waterway or the bank. So, that is included in that $9,400. Are there any questions regarding that?
Trustees? Matt, can I have a motion, please?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
By Trustee Pollak. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
See, a resolution authorizing the Village Manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $37,610 for Christopher B. Burke Engineering to provide the professional construction and engineering services as part of the Swan Pond Walkway Path Reconstruction Project. Director Tab?
That one is pretty self-explanatory. I will note, on November 5, 2020, the Board approved the design-stage engineering of $38,000. The current resolution would be for the, the construction phase of the engineering for the Swan Pond project.
There are no, yes?
And this is within the pre-approved budget that we had?
It, the pre-approved budget was $35,000 and change. It's, you know, a couple thousand.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion made.
Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Trustee Pollak. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka. Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Sorry, I didn't vote. I just would like some clarification in this letter that's attached from Christopher Burke Engineering, which references the ADA wood rail fence. Can I get some clarification on whether the wood rail fence is part of what we're voting on or not? Because I don't think any commissions have seen that.
It is not. That will be addressed in a later ADA presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to seek clarification on that because it seemed like the letter agreement dated June 4 from Christopher Burke was encompassed by this resolution. And I didn't feel comfortable voting if that was the case. But with those assurances, I will vote yes. Aye.
Thank you.
We done?
We're done.
We're done. D, an ordinance providing for the registration and inspection of rental properties within the Village of Riverside. I'm assuming a number of you people are here to speak to that. And I want you to know that we are still collecting your feedback. No decision will be made. We have a number of emails that have come in. I've asked the manager to make sure that any emails that come in, she distributes to all the Board. The Board will continue to review these emails. And then, we will have, you know, a conversation, you know, with staff on, you know, feedback that you, that you give. So, I just want you to know, no decision is going to be made tonight, but you're more than welcome to speak if you'd like to. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm John Plunkett. I live at 107 Pine. And I just want to be sure that I'm interpreting this correctly. Under E4 exemptions, we own a two-flat. We're renting one of the two units to a family member, which makes us exempt from getting the Certificate of Compliance. But I, do I read this correctly? We would still have to register annually and pay the $10 fee, I guess. Is that correct?
Mr. Marsh?
That is an interesting question. I don't know that our intent was to have you register as well, so I might want, might want to clarify that in the ordinance.
Okay. It, we would be exempt, though, in terms of...
You are correct. You would be exempt from the Certificate of Compliance.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm precipitating this. The safety, welfare, it's... I mean, I've owned the building for over 40-something years, and nobody has ever been concerned about, outside of fire inspection, the safety, welfare. What does that mean?
I think our goal is to protect the safety and welfare of our rental, our residents.
In what way?
By making sure that the buildings are safe and compliant. I, you know, again...
Has anything to do with, maybe I am completely wrong, some of the larger buildings are under, perhaps, Section 8?
This, this...
Overcrowding of tenants?
This, this ordinance isn't targeted at any, any particular building or any particular landlord. This ordinance is encompassing about...
After 40-something years?
So, the, the purpose of this, and there are a number of other communities that have these types of requirements for rental inspections, and it's preservation of property, both of the property owner in and of themselves, so you as an owner of a multifamily property, also residents that own single-family homes. So, preserving the property, they're getting eyes on it every three years, where our inspector goes in and can give you helpful guidance as it relates to items that you might not even realize within your unit, not only to preserve it from fire inspections, to make sure that your CO detectors are working, your fire, you know, your fire alarms are working, but also to make sure that there's other things to limit any type of potential liability on your part. But in addition to that, we do have code enforcement challenges for different properties, and we do receive complaints from renters. And so, this is the Village trying to take a proactive approach to help those building owners maintain their buildings for items that they may not know or realize are deficient.
Well, I'll tell you, in my building, I constantly check on things, change things. I just, I don't know. I just think it's a terrible inconvenience, picking out so many tenants, looking at their apartments. I tell my tenants, if anything is wrong, you tell me, it'll be fixed immediately. I have tenants referring people to me, asking to rent an apartment. For example, I have not rented 200 units since, not this last January, last January, because of COVID. I don't want anybody coming in to my building, endangering my tenants as well as myself. I want to insist that they get vaccinated if they rent an apartment for me. Everything in my building, the fire inspector, you'll come in and check anything you want, and they do. I have constantly...
Now, I think our goal is to make sure that every multifamily property or single-family property that's being rented in Riverside is maintained to the, the same level. Because by doing that, we're preserving your property value too. Because if someone, whether it's multifamily that's adjacent to your building, or a single-family home that's being rented, and it's not maintained to that same level, it could have an impact on your property as well.
I mean, I've read this...
Or your renters, too.
It's just COVID-ing to me. I really, it's overwhelming, coming in every so many months, checking 20% of the apartments.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is W. Robert Dimitro. I'm a multiple property owner in Riverside. I kind of understand what you guys are going through, but number one, I didn't have enough notification to come to this meeting tonight. I only got a chance to go through a couple pages here that I have a lot of question time. Once I'm done, this meeting will probably take three hours to finish, but I'm not going to, you know, drag it on that long. Most of these things that you mentioned are already laws, ordinances, and rules in this town are ready for homes, commercial, business, profits, nonprofits. To signal out the landlords in this town for these stipulations or whatever, new ordinances, it should apply to the whole town. Okay? A lot of homes are in disrepair, not safe, like you mentioned. The neighbor, the renter next door, they're both leaning on each other. All properties, residential, business, and commercial, once again, are already set in these ordinances. The number-one question I have, I know you have problems with certain properties in the town, whatever. This ordinance, in my opinion, should be geared to the properties you're having problems with. What are the statistics that you can make available to us for the single homes that are being rented, the two-flats, the three-flats, the four-flats, the six-flats, the multiple units that you guys are having problems with? Enforce the laws with the ones you're having problems with. There's a lot of landlords in this town who are renting out their homes that don't have that issues, the vast majority, I would guess. Go after it, enforce the laws. If they don't pay the fines, put things on their property. When they sell them, they'll pay the fines. These charges that you'll be charging people every time an apartment's rented, $110, is it also understood that this $110, which it is, will be the first time around, we all know this price is going to go up, that's going to be passed on to the tenant? So, not only are they going to have a credit check, a background check, we're going to have to throw $110 that you guys are imposing for them to rent the apartment, as they have to pay for the landlord. Also, this COVID is going on. Do you want to bring all these people into, into people's homes and apartments, whatever? It doesn't make any sense to me there either. Also, I know you guys are doing your budgets. Are we going to have a new czar in town to inspect all these properties? Does that come with, with full-time salary, benefits? Who's going to pay for all this? This $110 is not going to pay for it. You're going to have to have an army to do this. And who's, who's that going to fall on? Also, if we start with the landlords, is this going to go into the homes? Is this going to bleed over to the homes? Because it's very discriminatory just to pick out residential apartment buildings or rental homes. Is this going to bleed over to the homes? Are they going to go to your home, your home, your home, your home, and inspect them also? I have no problem inspecting my home or inspecting my properties, none whatsoever. They're all kept at the park. But you're putting undue burden on renters, property owners, and, you know, my thing is just go after the ones you're having problems with. I know they're taking you to court and bleeding you dry or whatever. What I just don't want with these ordinances, and what else is in here, it doesn't address, I appeal the thing to the manager. Who do I appeal to after that? The circuit court? The State Supreme Court? The United States Court? Who, where are we going to get this, this money to pay for all these legal fees? I'm, I'm not sure. Is this going to be another broke field where a $50 ticket turns into a $12,000, $400 legal bill to enforce a $50 ticket? Some of these things I've mentioned, I didn't get a chance to go over all of them because I just got noticed because it was bailed seven days ago. I got it yesterday. I would like more time to prepare for this. And I would also like you guys to table this another month and set out another notification for another meeting, so other landlords and investor property owners can address this properly with more due notification. And I understand where you guys are coming from, whatever, but it has to get done, but, you know, you're picking on the wrong people.
Thank you for your comments. And at the beginning, I did say that we were not taking any action on this tonight. We are still looking for input. I would appreciate it if you would take the time to put your input in an email to our manager, so we can put it into the record with the rest of the input. And we will take a look at this. This is not a done deal, sir.
Oh, no, no.
Okay. We, I mean, this is, this was something that was brought up to us. It was written. We mailed it out. I've actually hand-delivered some of these to some of the landlords. I mean, I, we really want to get your input. So, this is not, this is not something that we're going to take action on soon. So, please take...
Can I ask one thing, though?
Sure.
Could I, or can you make public by category, you know, like insurance does it? You know, insurance is this much for a two-flat, four-flat, because it's more risk in each one. Where you're having all these complaints, could you make it public? You don't have to give the address or the name. Make it public. We're getting this, this many from a single-family dwelling. We're getting these many complaints from a two-flat, three-flat, four-flat, six-flat, or multiple monstrosities, whatever, where your complaints are coming from, where everybody's not following code in town. That's the only thing I ask. And the thing is, here, let's go after where the problem is, you know? And I don't want to liken it to, you have three drunk drivers in town, so you put a breathalyzer in the car for every resident in town to blow into before they start the car. Just go after the people that are DUI, whatever, not everybody that's driving the car, you know? But, once again, I want to reiterate, if you could come out with the statistics, no names, no addresses, just go by company and units in the building where you guys are having problems, then let's deal with them first. And if it happens to the other ones, and I understand the safety aspect and everything, but, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dimitro. Appreciate it. And I, please, do take the time to...
Oh, I mostly definitely will, but it said the deadline was tonight.
Yeah.
Put it in, however, and I don't have enough time to get this all done by tonight. Do I get an extension like the next one?
You get an ex, you get an extension.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next would be Swan Pond, Director Tab? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Anybody else who wants to talk?
I will, but you go first.
Good evening. My name's Dale Yates. I live on Grove Light Avenue in Riverside. I'm an owner of a two-flat. I'm almost amazed that there's not enough more people here that own property in Riverside. I think this is a big deal, and I agree wholeheartedly with this gentleman up that just was here. I could, a lot of this stuff that he talked about, I was going to talk about it. My wife, my partner, has also expressed her feelings by email to the Board. And it's quite explicit and kind of telltelling here what we're looking at. My feeling on it, if you're, if this is a revenue-generating program that you're trying to do with, and is fee-based, I don't think this is the right direction to take. I think it is group punishment, like this young lady said over here, about taking someone that all the, that has been a problem in the town, and then, let's punish them everything. I've had 65 years in this business, real estate, construction, and leasing. And I'm going to tell you, you're going to make yourself my partner if there's a problem. Because this is what will happen. Once renters, which are lovely people, in my book, I have great renters over the years, but they'll, they'll come out after you, too. So, I'm saying, if you have a Section 8 property that you have a problem with, there are state and federal guidelines that, that take this into consideration, and there are inspectors to be able to take care of that problem. So, I'm just assuming the problems that you're having with being negligent, I think some of the wording that was used in the draft was, you're doing this because nuisance, nuisance conditions, adverse conditions, substandard housing, unsafe, non-code compliant conditions, and to provide regulatory scheme for rental property. So, I'm saying, I don't want to take a lot... So I'm saying, I don't want to take a lot of time with, Mr. President, with the time here today. I understand it, but I thought that this is what this meeting was for tonight, to go over this and get this over with. I mean, I think this was kind of rushed through. It was poorly written. And I've seen a lot of leases, too. So I'm saying, I don't know how much experience there has. I know there's been board members here that are in the real estate business or have been in the real estate business, but in the rental business, it's a little different, as this gentleman probably can concur with me. It's a different ballgame. It's not easy. It's not easy. So what I'm trying to say here is, I think what I'd like to offer to you is another alternative, rather than being a problem announcer, be an alternative for you to consider, and that would be to do a fee-based program and charge the fee as a business license for those people. If you're a renter, or I mean, an owner of properties, get a business license. You could have on a form, you could have a whole harmless agreement on there stating that the owner of the property takes full responsibility to adhere to the guidelines in the state of Illinois and the federal guidelines as far as maintenance, the well-being of the tenant, and code violations and ordinances, and let them sign it. The bottom line here is, you're going to have to go to court anyway with someone if something happens. So let them sign off on it. I'd be willing to do that. Before, I don't have multiple properties anymore because I'm retired. I'm going on 87 years old. But what I want to do is, you know, offer you that condition that may help you to get another perspective on what you're looking for. If you're looking for revenue, I have no problem with that. But like I'm saying, I'm also going to agree, when you're talking about what an code enforcement czar is what you're looking for, is going to go around looking for code enforcement, that's another position that I think that this village can not stand at this time. I'm glad you had a surplus budget meeting and all that tonight, and the report was really well-written, and I'm sure you're happy about it. I'm happy about it, but I don't think you have to spend that kind of money. A lot of villages in town right now are going the opposite way in hiring independent contractors to do this work. You have an attorney, basically not on staff, he's a contractor. He's a mercenary soldier. He comes to work here, okay? He does his work. You have an engineer, Burke Engineering makes a lot of money here. He goes to work for you. So I'm saying, we can work for you, too, as property owners. We can work for you also in working with you on this problem by basically letting you off the hook here as far as the liability of what's done here. I don't think you have to punish people who take care of their property. I think most people in this town take great pride in their property as renters and owners and management companies. I'm shocked that there isn't a bigger management company, there's bigger guys than me in here that own property here that are not here tonight, and I'm kind of shocked by that. But if I can help you in any way, you want to go over, like this gentleman said, I'll be happy to go over line by line with you on every item in that category, if you can point to me where my program would be not as good as your program. I think it's very prohibitive to go to an area like this without having a lot more feedback. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming up. Thank you for the ideas. Ma'am, did you want to say something else, or were you-
You'd be here all night long. I'm not complaining about you wanting to check bad things, but I don't give leases. If I have a tenant and I find something wrong with that tenant, he's gone. I check upon my tenants. I go through the building. I check, I've had three or four roofs put on. I've had my gutters wired with heat so that they don't freeze up. I checked electricity. I welcome the fire department come in. I said, "Don't you want to go through all the apartments?" He says, "No, just go through the hallways," and we check the furnace room, and we make sure that you've got, what are they, fire extinguishers? I want them to check everything.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I know that, but making-
We haven't done anything. Please, we haven't done anything. Yes, sir.
Oh, just one last thing. Like he didn't mention or whatever.
Wait, hold on, wait.
Oh, come back up?
Yes, please.
Like he mentioned or whatever, this is something that has never been dealt with in a town or wherever. You have a commission for this, a commission from this, a board for this, a board for that. If I could suggest that you guys have a commission, I think he said he volunteered, and I know a bunch of other property owners, too, if they knew this meeting was going on tonight, that they would probably volunteer, too. And you could pick from the cream of the crop in town on how to advise and how to get you guys over this hurdle, and if you guys would take that into consideration when you guys discussed it later on.
Thank you, Mr. Dimitro. I appreciate that. Swan Pond, Director Tab.
Ooh, I'm so sorry.
All right.
Is there going to be discussion? Want to discuss any other items?
Sure, if you wish, yes. I mean, we're not taking any action. I mean, we're here to listen to the residents, but if you'd like to make a statement, please.
I don't know, it's just going to be public. I'm going to-
Please, feel free.
I'll comment if it's appropriate. I would just say, I appreciate the feedback. We've received a lot of feedback by email. We appreciate you coming tonight and sharing your comments with us. That's the stage that we're in. I, too, share some of the same concerns. I think what we would like is just a little bit more information and a little bit more time to consider the ordinance.
When I called this afternoon, she told me that there would be another meeting on July, the 17th of July.
Correct.
Fifteen.
Yes.
And just want to reiterate what President Ballering said, you know, this input is critical, and I appreciate you all coming out here. As you take time to go back through the ordinance, you know, this was a, I'm not quite sure which version was sent out, but, you know, hear you on the impediment of cost, you know, just keep in mind sort of the health and safety. You know, we want to protect the residents, you know, homes being rented, apartment buildings being rented. So the more feedback we get from the property owners and the tenants, the better this process is. This is not adversarial. We're here to listen. So, you know, please, as you get other ideas, please email in and let us know. This is very helpful to us.
Anyone else? Please. Director Tab. Once again, thank you.
Okay, I know this is not an agenda item. This was a late addition, but I felt it worthwhile to present to the board. Back on March 18th, the board was presented with the Swan Pond design, and the board requested of Christopher Burke Engineering to come back with or look into ADA complacency for Swan Pond. They provided a memo which should be in front of all of you, so I wanted to go ahead and summarize that memo regarding the ADA complacency. During Swan Pond discussion at the March 18th Village Board Meeting, the board directed the villagers' engineer firm to evaluate the requirements for ADA accessibility on the north end of the path. Originally, it was thought that handrails along the path would be sufficient to meet ADA requirements. However, this was pending further evaluation. During that evaluation period, the slope of the path was noted as being too steep to come into compliance with ADA requirements. To elaborate on this, the running slope of a multi-use path can be no more than 5%. This can be increased to 8.3% when landings are installed on steeper terrain. The survey data from the north slope adjacent to Burling Road indicates a running slope of more than 13.5%. To bring the running slope into compliance, typically the path would be raised at the bottom and lowered at the top to allow for flattening of the slope between the two points. Unfortunately, raising the bottom of the path is not an option because it's located within a flood plain, and the restriction against adding fill to, there is restrictions against adding fill to such sites. In addition, lowering the top of the path would require dropping the sidewalk along Burling Road approximately two feet in order to decrease the slope between the two points. As a result of these site constraints, the village's engineer has determined that it's not practical to bring this portion of the path into compliance. Constraints such as these are recognized by the U.S. Access Board, and when relevant, the village is to adhere to the requirements to meet the extent which is practical. The village in its effort to adhere to these requirements will post a village branded sign on the north end of the path indicating ADA access will be located off of Fairbank Road on the southern portion of the path. Along with the installation of a sign, the village will look into locating a number of handicap parking spaces at the southern end of the path. In addition, the originally proposed railings would be removed from the bid spec due to non-compliance with the ADA portion. In summary, the village's engineer firm recommends moving forward with the current design, which provides compliance to the extent practicable. And the reason we bring this tonight, originally, the project was supposed to go to bid today, but I wanted to present it in front of the board, and the bid would be pushed, is going to be pushed off tomorrow, depending on the decision of the board, if that's the direction we want to move forward with.
Trustees, any comments? Do we feel comfortable? Oh, go ahead, trustee Paul.
Well, I'm not a bit surprised I was skeptical to begin with that that could be brought into compliance, and I would still like to keep the option of that handrail available to us, recognizing as trustee Marsh Osgood said, it needs to go through the proper approval channels. I still think that handrail may be beneficial, even though it wouldn't satisfy ADA requirements, but other than that, I'm comfortable with what's proposed.
For, the handrail would be a $20,000 cost.
Well.
Not to rain on your parade, I just wanted to provide the information.
I guess that can always be done later.
But just to clarify, we do have the ADA accessible entrance-
On the southern end.
On the southern end, and the signage would indicate that.
There would be a sign indicating the accessible portion. The sign would be placed on the north end indicating the ADA accessible portion on the south end.
Okay. All right. And then by not having the railing there, you would, you know, have freedom for the bicycle and the vehicle access without concern, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Do you have enough direction from the board to go to bid tomorrow?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
When Burke came out to review this, would it be a world once you did renovations that you're going to have to abide by ADA compliance?
Well, they looked into it. They did the evaluation. They took the survey data, and that's how they were able to come to the 13.5%.
I know, I'm just saying, this is real security. The guy's an engineer. He doesn't need a transit copter and look at this up and say, "How many feet you got to deal with." He's great, probably could say, "Hey, this is not going to work here, so you have to move to something else." I'm saying, don't move it, but I mean, I think this is way over the top here, you know, for him not to come up with that finding right then.
Okay. He was directed, Mr. Yates, he was directed by the board to take a look at that? That's what he did. Director Tab, thank you very much. I appreciate your help. We move on to new business. Before you, you see a Procedures for Boards and Commission manual that some of you have helped put this together, have had input. Even if you have not been talked to directly, believe me, you all have had input in this because going to the various board meetings over the last few months is what really drove me to this. Kathy, Stephen, what you're talking about falls into this, and that's, you know, with your homestead overlook, yes, you, you're Kathy. You know, trying, you know, and I think a lot of this is basically just explaining how we choose commissioners, how commissioners are moved, duties of the chair, the duties of the commissioners, but the real meat here is the annual work plans that we're going to ask from the boards. You know, especially our LAC, our Historical, our Riverside TV, and our EDC. We really want these boards to, you know, look forward, tell us what they want to see in the new year, especially at this time, so we could make budget recommendations in order to facilitate these things. And I, we've done some things, and we have staff liaisons to every board. We no longer have trustee liaisons, and the reason for that is, personally, I'd like to, we have trustees that are, have, you know, that we have, there is a lot of expertise, and I want trustees to feel comfortable sharing their expertise with, whether it be recreation, whether it be historical, whether it be preservation, and not feel like they're stepping on other trustees' toes. So it's, they can, you know, I think this is a great way to allow them to do that. If you all accept this tonight, you know, I will have a conversation with all the chairs so they understand this annual work plan, and I think just this section would solve several of the issues that we're actually talking about tonight. Filming, you know, there's things, and, you know, I, one of the things that really came to me was, I was listening to a historical commission meeting, and they did some great things with the grants that this village gave, that this board approved. They went out and awarded these grants, and they were actually at the meeting wondering how this information would come back to the board. How would people know that they did it? And, you know, the staff liaison made a mention to it at a board meeting, but I think that comes much stronger when the chair could come here and share. Matter of fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Upus from the Landmark, and he didn't even know that those grants were issued, and he wanted to finish the story. So, and I think it's very, very important to keep our commissions talking to each other, working collaborative, and then, you know, taking the initiative that when we send down something that we feel is important, that they can come back to us and give us, you know, their feedback, or if they see something that they don't necessarily agree with us, that they feel that there's an opportunity for them to come forth. So that was the overall reason for this. I think we have to ask for basically conversation. If you all agree, we can put this into policy. Is there any discussion?
I think it's very well thought out, and I think it will be a great guidepost to the commission, so I want to congratulate everyone who put the hard work into it. It's great output.
Thank you, trustee Hannah. Yes, sir.
Can I suggest a couple tweaks?
Pardon me?
Can I suggest a couple tweaks to this before we approve it?
Sure.
Okay.
Our legal tweaks?
Legal tweaks. Figure out the page here. Page 317 of the packet. Under E, what happens when there's no quorum at a meeting? That last bullet point, if no quorum is present, discussion can occur, but no votes may be taken. That may technically be true, but we really don't encourage that practice. There's not a lot of good that can come out of, you can't take any votes, you don't have a quorum there, so we would, you know, encourage in those situations to either wait it out or just set a new meeting date. You know, you can leave it in if you want because it's technically correct, but we always encourage people not to do that. The next page, under 7, public comment. If we could strike address, ask each speaker to provide their name and address. That's something that we can no longer require of people. And then I had one on the very final page, under Open Meetings Act, the last paragraph. Such discussions should never involve a quorum. That should actually be a majority of a quorum, because remember, a majority of quorum is what triggers the requirements of the act. So if we're having discussions outside of public meeting, we want to be conscious of the fact that it's a majority of a quorum that triggers the requirements of the act. of the fact that it's a majority of a quorum that triggers the requirements of the act.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I thought it was great.
With those changes, do we have to take a vote or are we just?
Yeah, to adopt this as a policy.
Do we have a motion in a second? Yes, wait, I'm sorry.
Just one, one other comment, I just want to make sure that committees and the chairs understand, and I want to emphasize that each one has a staff liaison, and the legwork on action plans and these kinds of things will be done by staff, or are not led by staff, but staff will be there to support that in every instance.
Correct. The only commission currently and with the new hires that we're making currently is Historical, that doesn't have a staff liaison, so that will change.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion made.
A motion by trustee Gallagos to accept it with the changes noted by-
Attorney Mars.
Attorney Mars, as well as there are some grammatical, grammatical miracle-
I did the proofreading.
Proofreading?
There was some minor edits that-
But nothing changed the content?
Nothing substantial.
Would you mind to try to say that?
That's fine.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by trustee Marsh Ozga. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Moving on, and thank you to all of you for your help, I appreciate it, I think it's going to work out really well. You all, you all did have, even whether I, you know, believe it or not, you all had a part in this, so I really appreciate it, especially trustee Marsh Ozga, who helped me put some of us together, thank you. Ordinance amending section 662 of the water service charge and section 879 sewer service charges, Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Director Johns.
Good evening. The village received notice from the Village of McCook that they will be raising the price of water 1.35% effective June 1st, 2021. Typically, the village has also raised their rates when we get a rate notice change from McCook. The ordinance before you today raises the water and sewer rate by 1.5%. Also before you tonight at your workstation is a survey of the other surrounding villages' water and sewer rates. The village has made a concerted effort to make sure the Water Sewer Fund is charging the proportionate share of general fund expenses. I cannot speak for those other villages and how they navigate their fee structure.
Do we have any questions? I think it should also be noted that in the, in the CAFER, one of the things they say, we, we spent almost $3.2 million redoing the separation of sewers in the first division, and that is just the tip of the iceberg of what we need to do with, I think we have like seven or eight million dollars worth of work. And a lot of this is, this is being, you know, funded through these, these fees, and, you know, it's, it's, it's healthy that we have the reserves to do this. So, do we have a motion, please?
So moved to-
Motion by trustee Pollack in a second.
I'll make a second.
By trustee Gallagos.
I have a question on this.
Oh, sure.
I think I asked a previous question, do we have a contract, a clause in that contract with the cook and how often they can raise our rates?
They can, I don't remember the exact how often they can raise the rates, but they do have in the contract that they can raise them at least annually.
Okay. There's no maximum though, and we could see this in another three, four months if they wanted to.
They have, in the, in the past, they have raised them more than once a year.
And sometimes that's contingent of the city of Chicago with the pass-through. We experienced it probably more significantly, I would say, going back five years when City of Chicago was ramping up their, their fee structure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Next, Director Melchiodi, we have a motion to approve a special event application for Concert in the Park to be held on Friday, July 2nd, and the Independence Day Parade to be held on Saturday, July 3rd.
Onto the fun stuff. Good evening, President Valerian, village trustees, village manager Francis, you have before you the special event applications for the July 2nd Concert in the Park and the July 3rd Independence Day Parade. Just as a point of clarification and a reminder, when July 4th falls on a Sunday, we do move the festivities to the 2nd and 3rd, which is the case this year. We are pleased to be able to bring these events that have a longstanding tradition back to the residents of Riverside. We welcome the opportunity to come together as a community and celebrate Independence Day. The Concert in the Park will begin at 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Will feature the bands Hail Caesar and Run Forest Run, of course, beginning with the singing of the National Anthem by our very own Jennifer Pollack. It will be held in Guthrie Park in our typical layout and with local vendors providing food and beverages. The parade lineup, if you're participating, will begin at 8:15 near Big Ballpark, and the parade will start at 8:45. The parade will follow our typical route, beginning at Big Ballpark and ending at Guthrie Park. And just as village, village manager Francis said before, while it is on a different day, typically we have our 5K run on the 4th of July, this year it is on June 26th, that is the Friends of the Fourth 5K run, you can still register online for that.
Thank you, Director Melchiodi. A couple of things, you know, I'm, this, I know this is probably, you know, quick that we've made this decision, but everything has kind of come on quick to us. You know, Riverside, I look at the, the vaccination numbers almost every week and Riverside's amazing, I mean, it's, I think the last time I checked, it's 88% of the people have had one dose in mid 70s that are fully vaccinated, and then, and that's just shows amazing responsibility, and I, I really appreciate that. I have my vaccinated rubber wristband on, probably got it at the farmer's market yesterday. We will ask people that are not vaccinated to please wear a mask, and that includes children under 12. We will make that request, we will have masks available. We will ask all our vendors to show proof of vaccination, and not only the vendors, but the workers, so they will, if they are not vaccinated or they cannot prove they are vaccinated, they will be masked. So with that, if I can have them, if there's any questions before I ask for a motion? If not, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Make that motion.
Trustee Gallagos in a second.
Second.
Trustee Marsh Ozga. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve a special event application for St. Mary's dedication ceremony to be held on June 27th, 2021. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I believe actually we have a representative from St. Mary's, so they would probably do this far better justice of presenting this item to the board than I.
Sorry, I didn't know you were there, we would have moved you up a little bit, I apologize.
Thank you for having me. I'm Jennifer Fangman, I'm Director of Operations at St. Mary Parish, and we have, are finally getting around to dedicating our office building that we moved into about 15, 18 months ago on Burlington in the Central Business District, and so we are coordinating that event with our unification with two other area parishes, so we will be the third event of the day starting in Lyons at St. Hugh, and then moving to North Riverside to Mater Christie, and then ours will be a pretty short dedication ceremony, about 15 or 20 minutes outdoors with a, just a small reception in the back of the building, so fairly simple.
Thank you. Any questions, trustees? If not, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion made.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second by trustee Hannan. Kathy, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you.
We have a proposal from the Frederick Law Olmsted Society for the Olmstead Overlook Living Tribute to Frederick Law Olmsted and the Health of Benefits of Nature. Kathy Maloney.
Thank you, and we will come up with a catchier title for this thing.
Order.
And just to clarify, I'm here now as a representative of the Olmstead Society as opposed to being here as the commissioner of the Landscape Commission. In your packet, you got a one-page narrative of the proposed Olmstead overlook, as well as a page of pictures as to where we're proposing to put it. So just briefly summarizing, as you know, next year is the 200th anniversary of Olmstead's birthday, there is a national celebration for this, different events and all the different Olmstead properties across the nation are happening, and village manager Francis has been very helpful, helping me coordinate with other groups who want to do something in 2022 to celebrate this. The Olmstead Society came up with the idea of creating two tributes to Olmstead. One is a, in connection with the seed, the new business in Riverside, one is to donate a very large botanical box to the public library, and the other is to create this living tribute of trees that we're calling the Olmstead Overlook. So what the Olmstead overlook is, is a grove of native trees, canopy and understory, it's designed with a naturalistic look, it's all native trees, the intent is to encourage quiet reflection and a love of nature, and also to celebrate the fact that we all came through, all of us sitting here, the pandemic. As you probably know, Olmstead was very concerned about having served in what was the precursor to the Red Cross, the American Red Cross, during the Civil War. He was very concerned about physical health as well as mental health, and so we want to also celebrate that hopefully the pandemic is completely in the rearview mirror by 2022. So the, where is the site? Well, our goal was to have it be accessible and central to most residents, that it would offer a view of the river and Swan Pond, and doesn't interfere with any underground infrastructure. So we walked the site, there were a number of different sites proposed by this committee within the Olmstead group, and we walked the site and with Dan Tab and Mike Collins and the landscape architect, and came upon this site, which is about halfway between the church, Presbyterian Church, and the dam, or, you know, Joliet Road there. How will we get this and how will we fund it? The Olmstead Society will serve as the conduit for collecting funds. The seed is donating a part of the proceeds from the sale of smaller botanical boxes to both the large botanical box being created for the public library, as well as to this grove. Can also, villagers can also make donations, et cetera. So the, and when? Commensurate with your approval, this, the plan has been approved by the LAC, the funding drive would begin, and the planting of the overlook by volunteers will occur in spring of 2022.
Thank you, I think we also have to send this to preservation because we have the bench that you're, you're also asking about?
And we, yes, we can, the bench is optional, but yes, if we include that, we can.
And I also would like to get the, the, when the LAC had this discussion, was, was it talked about how maintenance, how we were going to maintain this? Was, was Mike Collins on board with all of this?
The, well, since Dan is here, he can correct me, the water will be provided by the village, but volunteers will need to water.
Okay. I think, I think as of now, we can send this to preservation, but I think we need to have at least an idea of the, the maintenance cost, the water cost, and then we could put this in our budget?
I don't know that it's ready for preservation yet until they have the donation, because usually for hardscape, for the bench anyway, it would go to preservation once we have the application for the bench.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we remove the bench from the proposal here? Since that seems to be the hangup with preservation, we can always add a bench later if needed. So right now, I'm asking you to approve the design less the bench.
Yes, trustee Hannan?
Can we just make a motion?
No, question, please.
It says in here, 100 feet, is, is the plant have eight existing trees or amongst these trees?
Amongst the existing trees. There's about eight existing trees.
And do we know what the setback is from the road?
Whatever the usual setback is.
I didn't see a map of where this grove is vis a vis the streets and didn't get a sense of, I'm just trying, trying to visualize, you know, 16 understory and eight canopy trees among those trees, you know, what area does that cover, where exactly within this picture it's going to fall?
Right. So Dan also handed out in front of you, if you, if you're comfortable reading the plan view, this can show you where the trees would be.
In the meantime, Kathy, I think it's important to recognize that there could be a range of trees provided, that this, these numbers, the eight, you know, mature and 16 understory are not firm, they are also dependent on the success of the fundraising.
That's exactly right. I mean, if we don't have all the funds that are needed, this would be a much smaller growth. So this is the maximum view if all the funds were collected.
President Valerian. Trustee Hannan, please.
Yeah, has, has there been any outreach to the neighbors across the street on their impact or impact on this?
So what I understand is we don't normally do that for planting on public grounds, otherwise every time Mike planted a tree, he'd have to check with the neighbors.
My question wasn't what was required, the answer, the question was, did you? And the answer is obviously no.
I did not, no.
Okay.
I, I personally don't think we're ready to make a decision on this because we, we just got this today. I would, I would like to hear from staff on their ability to maintain this. You know, I, I had a brief conversation with, with Mike Collins, he wasn't 100% confident that this could be maintained by the village under, under current staffing, and so I would, I would, I would think, you know, we need to at least move cautiously on this and work with it through our budget process.
Okay, so can you give me a timeline? Because I have to sync that up with our funding.
Well, our budget process is September, the fall.
So September, and that's when it starts?
Mm-hmm.
And when, so when would we know? When would a decision be made?
Usually we have close to a final budget at the end of October because we have our budget hearings in November and our tax levy hearings in November for final adoption in December. So, you know, I, I guess my suggestion or guidance would be, I don't, and I don't want to speak for the village board, I don't know that the board members are saying we can't do something, it's just to what extent? So whether or not you want to start fundraising, recognizing, because I understand fundraising takes quite a long time, but also recognizing that this plan could be subject to evolve somewhat.
Mm-hmm.
but also recognizing that this plan could be subject to evolve somewhat, and just the comfort level associated with it.
Is the board happy with that, so that we can start fundraising with a, just go ahead.
Trustee Pollack.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, that we should always look at maintenance and hidden costs on any project we do, but my instinct tells me that that shouldn't be that big of a deal. I mean, we're talking about buying gator bags for, or something, or, you know, it seems like a pretty straightforward thing that we could be able to put a cost on in the next week or two, right? And say, that's a budget breaker, or it's not, or it's just an incidental cost.
I think one of the things, and trustee Hannah kind of pointed to it, that when initially we received this to be incorporated in the packet, really had not gone through. My mind was, you know, we don't want to obstruct the view of the river to those residents that live adjacent to it. And so just kind of recognizing that and being cognizant of it, too.
So that's a separate question that you're asking about as opposed to maintenance, or what, what needs to be done as regards to that?
I think what President Ballerine was asking was the maintenance cost and whether or not it's sustainable. And then having Mike take a closer look, because we don't want to plant trees that are necessarily, we plant them and then they can't thrive in the location.
So Mike has seen this, Mike is in the meeting, so when it was approved. Concerning the view with the neighbors, if you look right now, you cannot see the river. There are two houses that look out on this area. So I don't know what you're asking.
Well, we, again, we don't, we don't know what those, those, those people may think about the idea, and this is the first time we're talking about it. So I, I, I think we need to make sure we have, you know, all our ducks in a row before we, before we, you know, agree to something of this scale. This is a lot of, a lot of planting and a lot of, a lot of work. So I just want to make sure Mike's on board and we can maintain it with our staff. You say Mike was there, he's, I, you know, I don't think there's any reason why we can't, you know, get, get, get the opinion from Mike. You can go ahead and start your fundraising, but I, I feel we should, we should make sure we, we have all the capability to do this before we, before we.
Totally on board, totally on board. Can we do that without waiting until the end of October? Can we have a discussion with the staff?
Sure, we can, we can have a preliminary discussion with staff and find out to make sure they answer the questions that we're raising, yes.
Okay, so if that happens, then what? And if they say yes, then what, does it come before this board again?
Then this board can make a decision, yes.
Okay, so the, so the steps are, have a discussion with the staff, meaning Mike and Dan, that they can maintain this, and then bring it back to the board, is that correct? That's what we want to do?
That would be.
For a vote?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Deliver F, discussion of grant opportunities for village parking lots, Director Tab and Director Johns.
Good evening. Staff identified an IEP A Section 319 grant program that may apply to the installation to permeable paver parking lots. In reviewing the village's parking lot, this parking lots, this may affect, this may be eligible for lot number four, five, or eight. We wanted to get direction from the board if they would like us to move forward on these grant applications, and if so, which parking lot would be the board priority. Staff identified lot five as the preferred lot, currently the lot next to the police department, noting that this is a 50-year lifespan of a lot, and there have been numerous discussions regarding the future of the youth center and the safety building. Our next recommendation was lot eight, located along the tracks behind the arcade building, which is also in need of attention.
Sure.
Yes, I agree that lot five was in desperate need of resurfacing, and also eager to get lot eight, that's the one along the train tracks, right? And also along Quincy in the back. I think that would be a good idea to prioritize that lot, just as a contribution to the revitalization of the area.
You also mentioned lot four, what is, which where is lot four?
This is one on Pine, it's a large lot on Pine, across from the firehouse.
It's a 24-hour rental.
Behind Riverside Garage.
Okay, okay.
And would the proposal be to do a green-type parking lot that we'd go for the grant for, like we did with the commuter lot?
Correct. The, the completion of one of these lots as a green parking lot, the village's share would approximately equal the fund balance in the parking lot fund. So we'd recommend applying for one of them.
Yeah, just looking for comment, I, I really think that lot eight would complement what we've done with the other commuting parking lot, and also complement what we've done on Burlington and the additional streetscape coming down Long Common. So I, I think that would be, if we're picking between the two lots, I, I think lot eight would have more visual impact among what we've done already.
I would definitely agree with trustee Hannah on that one, and I would also recognize and acknowledge the need for the parking lot in front of the police and fire departments to be improved, though if I see mentioned in the executive summary that there have been discussions about redoing the buildings back there. So perhaps if major construction is on the horizon in that general vicinity, it doesn't make sense to do a green parking lot there. So, those are my thoughts.
I would just, with regard to that parking lot by the police and fire department, if we don't apply for the grant for it, it will be at least staff's recommendation as we start the budget process to address it, even if it's a small fix, especially in that one piece, I think we got a quote, it's around $50,000 or $60,000, to, to fix that, even if it comes out of the capital projects fund and we can't fund it through parking lot, simply for the fact that it's becoming a risk management issue, and we have a $50,000 deductible, so.
Yeah, I definitely understand, and I understand that it would have to be paid for somehow, but if you're going to put beautiful pavers down, maybe the spot to do it is, you know, along the trainscape, tying in with the other improvements that you're doing in the area. That's how I would prioritize.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
Just as an aside, lot eight, we do have a long-term agreement with First American Bank regarding some of their spots in that lot. So we would have to reach out to them, they're required to pay their proportionate share as well.
So this, they would have to, they would have to partner with us to do this on eight?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
If not for the fact that we don't know what's going to happen to the youth center property, I would leave toward lot five, but that's a big factor.
Correct.
And we keep throwing Band-Aids at that property. And, you know, we had some of the new trustees probably not aware, but we had a detailed space study done several years ago, and the cost was astronomical. But, so I guess I'd go along with the consensus with lot eight.
Could you, what parking lot is in the CBD next to either the post office or Riverside Bank? Those are both village parking lots, am I correct?
Yeah, that one that runs across the tracks, and that one just hasn't been identified as in need. That's the only one, it's not, the condition is not as bad.
Which parking lots are those, though, do you know? Are they listed on here?
All lots are on here. As far as reference to the exact number, not my mapping from here, couldn't tell you the exact number of that lot.
Personally, I think spending money in our, you know, trying to continue the work under CBD, we have the green parking lot that's already there, if, you know, coming down that street in front of the post office, we, you know, or, or moving over towards the rivers, I think it's just, we have all that tied in, it just seems like we'd get the most bang for our buck. Even though that those parking lots may not be critical mass, I think they would be probably the most visual bang for our buck, that's just my, my, my thought. But I don't know which ones they are. But they gotta be less than eight, I would assume, because it's.
Would probably be similar square foot to eight.
Sorry, I should have asked this question to you earlier, I apologize.
Yeah.
President Ballerine, are you, are you talking about the parking lot where the, where the post office is?
Yes.
That's, that's our lot?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I, does it connect, does our property, our lot, connect to the first green parking lot? I, I, I think, I didn't realize that was ours, for one.
Well, so let me clarify, that driveway that connects it is actually BNSF. We purchased certain pieces of it, of BNSF property when we created the green parking lot. But that driveway that runs from our green parking lot to the post office one is actually part of our BNSF agreement.
Yeah, I mean, if we could complete the second half, if you will, of that first green parking lot, I, I like that.
Well, which is in more of need, that one there or number, or number eight?
Eight's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, and we haven't done much on the south side of the tracks for the two-street area, so I'd like to have eight done. They ought to be done eventually, but lots prioritized by who needs what.
Okay.
The south side of the tracks, that's where lot five is.
Correct, lot five is right here.
Where's eight?
Eight's behind Jeff's Auto Metal Mites.
That's the strip you were talking about?
Oh, it's eight?
Yeah.
But you need to have, or you need to buy in from the bank on eight, correct?
The agreement says if we redo the lot, they are responsible for their proportionate share.
So you need to have buy-in from the, from the bank.
I think that would work better than just sending them an invoice, yes.
Yes. Looking to the trustees for a consensus on the lot, where, I mean, eight, five, or the other side of the tracks? Or to explore, explore the other ones? Okay.
Eight as well?
I'll go with eight, since it's in.
Six eights?
We will bring a resolution for support of the grant to the July 15 meeting.
Before you do that, are you going to have the conversation with the bank? Because it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Gee, a discussion regarding the fee waivers, manager Francis.
Thank you, President Ballerine. So I brought up in my previous manager's report at our last, no, I'm sorry, not our last board meeting, two board meetings ago, May 20th, with regard to the idea of looking at certain fee waivers for this year, recognizing that we potentially have an opportunity here with our liquor license waivers that the board authorized, and the outdoor cafe waiver as part of the COVID relief, that potentially to provide some new business incentives of this sort. And so trustee Hannah had asked for some additional data as it related to the numbers that we were looking at. And while it's not a significant dollar amount, I think it would be very significant to those new businesses coming in, offering a business license fee waiver and a waiver for the fire and the health inspection. So included in the agenda history sheet are a couple of different tables that show you the comparisons. First, it's kind of all encompassing as it relates to the waivers that we already have, just so that the board could see in totality the total fees that we would be waiving if a new business came in and asked for a Class E liquor license and was going to do the outdoor cafe in addition to the other fees associated. The reason why there are two different tables, it differentiates between new businesses coming into Riverside that are part of a business district that we have along Harlem Avenue 1, 2, and 3, or within our central business district area. Specifically, as it's written up, is looking to do waivers for new businesses that are sales tax generating, and showing how, the type of revenue that those new businesses would need to generate in order to make it essentially cost neutral for the village. Obviously, having any new business come into Riverside, it enhances the amenities to our residents, while also it enhances EAV because you have what was once a vacant storefront now being energized by a new business. Additionally, there's a separate two boxes that shows just what those costs would be, taking out the items that the board has already authorized due to the COVID relief for 2021. And for liquor licenses that go from 2021 into 2022, because they are renewed on a different, not on a calendar basis. So with regard to everything all encompassing, if the new business is not within a business district, they would need to have approximately $75,500 in total sales. If it's within a business district, and that's just kind of a reminder that our business districts, we assess an additional 1% sales tax, they, their total sales would have to be less at $56,625. If we're looking at just the fees that basically I'm recommending at this point in time, which is the business license, the health, two health inspections, and then the annual fire inspection, to make us whole on those fees, we would have to have $14,667 in total sales for that particular business. If it was in a business district, it would actually be less at $11,000. And just to give the board kind of a frame of reference of revenue that we receive, or total revenue of restaurant or sales tax generating business that remits places for eating tax to the village, their total sales range from $87,300 to $1.8 million. So given that, we would recover those costs and then some, so there would be definitely a benefit to the village. And so what staff is seeking is guidance of whether or not the board is supportive. If the board is, we can bring this back for formal adoption. I would recommend that it be retro to July 1, simply for the fact that I, we do have some pending business applications or individuals reviewing options within the village, and so I'd like to afford them the opportunity of these waivers if the board is supportive.
Trustees?
I like this very much. Is this a one-time waiver, just for the 12 months beginning July 1?
That would be my recommendation, for only new businesses generating sales, sales tax. So it would have to either be retail or a restaurant.
And we could revisit in 2022?
If it's successful, we can regroup with EDC and discuss it with them, and then, you know, bring back, maybe perhaps a different type of recommendation. This'll kind of give us some analytics to then bring back some other meaningful data to the village board.
I like it.
I think it's great.
Okay, you got, you got a lot of nods of heads. It's, it's, it's exciting to get some new businesses in town, and with new businesses, and we, we have a few, and, and just the energy that these business owners bring to town, they, they're, they're involved in our, our businesses with the Olmsted Society, with, with everything, and it's, it's just, it's, it's, it's exciting to see this, so hopefully this will help spur that, thank you.
You're welcome.
The last thing tonight is Riverside TV waiver request. The last thing tonight is Riverside TV waiver request. This is, I'll explain to you the policy, and then you can, we can, we can take it from there. When, when a, our request to have something filmed needs to go to our village manager, a form and a deposit. Two, two, two events, one, the Lantern Night, and the second, the Scuffy Degross Regatta, were both, applications were made, one by the Riverside American Legion Post 488, and the other one was Riverside Township Lions Club. They both paid their $200 deposit to have these filmed. If the, the, the village manager does not have the authority to waive the fees if she is asked, nor does the Riverside TV Commission have the authority to waive the fees. Only this board has the authority to waive the fees. One of, again, one of the reasons for this board's and policy commission manual is what I would ask Riverside TV to do is take an ongoing look at everything they film, obviously other than the board meetings and things like that, but RAW, the car shows, regattas, TV, 3rd of July, 4th of July, the races and stuff like that, and, and, and give us a, a recommendation on what should be filmed every year, what should be filmed every two years, what could be filmed every three years, you know, the car shows, you know, they're all old cars, do we need to film those every year? You know, it just, it's, we need that recommendation from them. But understanding that part of our CMAP initiative was to show the use of the river, trustee Galagos felt that both of these events warrant to be in the village, warrant filming, and we should waive the fees associated with them. He also has, has asked that we try to do a drone video for the regatta, and that would have been quite a bit of money, 15, I think, $1,500?
Yeah.
But we are very fortunate to have a drone pilot on our fire staff who has graciously given an hour off of his Sunday to videotape the regatta between, I think, 11:15 and 12:15, so paddle fast, my friend. But it is up to you all whether you feel you want to waive the fees, and I think your choices are you can, we could take these one at a time, the Lantern Night first, whether you want to waive all, part, or none. And any questions? Yes, trustee Clary?
Just question, just to understand, why are we proposing to waive the fee? Is it because the, the recordings are of value to us as the.
Correct.
As a village? And what are the fees? The deposit's $200?
Correct. And then it's the, the time after that, and, and I, that could be another $200 to $500? Depends on the time?
Yeah, it depends on the time that it takes Riverside TV to edit, how many crew members they have, and to create the final product. So we asked for the $200 as a deposit, and then we bill them based on our total costs.
And do we own it? I mean, it, it's ours when we're done? If it weren't otherwise, it would belong to the party that's requesting it? Is that how this works?
We would own it.
No, we would own it either way. We would have the ability to broadcast it either way.
So when we received the application and the check, what are they asking for?
When we initially.
If it's going to be our project?
Initially, when they submitted it, it was a typical, as, so a, a good comparison is Olmstead Society. So they, we film certain things, we can broadcast it on our channels or on our various social media, YouTube, and what have you, but they reimburse us for our costs. And so initially, that's how this request was treated, because it's not, while it's hosted within the village, it's not a, it's not like July 3rd, you know, the Concert in the Park. It's not a village event, so to speak, but it's open to the village.
And so why are we doing it different for the Lions Club and for the American Legion when we require like a contract with Floss?
I, I am not. We, we received a request.
That's what, that's what we're asking for.
What trustee Evans is asking is sort of my question as well, is what precedent are we setting? Obviously, I mean, that's a great example, the Frederick Law Olmstead Society, you know, that is the nature, no pun intended, of, of Riverside. You know, that clearly has a direct benefit on the things that they do, that, you know, whatever events they have highlights Frederick Olmstead as it applies to Riverside. You know, understand that having something on the river is helpful, but, you know, as I thought about Riverside Juniors, as I thought about the, the car shows, as I thought about the other things that get filmed, what's the standard for waiver? How do we apply this objectively? And, and I, I'm, I'm struggling with where that line gets drawn.
So the cost without the drone is approximately $700, $800, and the cost with the drone is about $1,500.
No.
At least, that's what it was on Monday.
Yeah, well, the drone is going to be done by Director Tabit.
For free.
For basically, yes.
Pretty, yeah.
Pretty free.
There's quite a nice hustle by using your drone.
It's a village-owned drone. Well, it's the fire department-owned, rather, through foreign fire tax, but, yeah.
So we, we could use the footage to promote the village and accessibility to the river.
Correct.
And with some extra production, like a script and voiceover, we could do maybe like some nice one or two-minute promotional videos for ourselves. I just still am trying to understand what the connection is, if, so if it's a, if the regatta is hosted by Lions Club, so are we just going to show up with our own equipment and just do our own thing? So what's the connection still then? It's not really waving, you're not really waving it, you're, you're, we're just recording it for ourselves.
We are, but we are going to have it, there is going to be a TV crew there. And go, go ahead.
Okay. So the board hasn't had a discussion like this since, I think, 2017, when they decided which ones they would film for free. The discussion at that point was about which ones would promote the village and create economic incentive. So some of the special events that we do have by the private sector or philanthropic sector, they do get, they do get filmed for free. The regatta filming doesn't do anything for the Lions Club, doesn't increase membership, doesn't increase anything for that. But since we are trying to now open the rivers up and, and become a destination for recreation on, on the river, this is the opportunity for us to film kayaking on the river in our downtown. I do see that this is the possibility of having promotional and marketing commercials for people to come on into town, bring your family, get on the kayak, stop at lunch at one of our restaurants, go shopping, et cetera. I also took a look at some of the things that we, we have in our history of ratings, as you would, as to how much people do want our, our videos. 2017 Lantern, or Concert in the Park had over 3,000 views. Olmstead did a great production that year for 2,200 views. Lantern Night did 4,000. The Regatta of 2019 did more than all of those combined, 10,000 views. People are watching this sort of stuff. This is a big draw to our village.
I guess I'm interested in who, who do we charge and who don't we charge? What's the current standard?
If you don't want this to be filmed, then the Lions Club will withdraw their application, does nothing for them.
That's not my question. My question is, who in the past have we waived for and who in the past have we charged?
We've waived for, well, RAW has had, we, we filmed.
RAW's a challenge, oh, well, because it's a collaboration between the village, so RAW is a group of volunteers, but the village has always been very much tied to that event and activity through the Parks and Rec Department.
We've also done the car shows.
I'm still confused why we're charging them at all. If we're filming it for our benefit, why, why, why are, why are the Lions being asked to pay a deposit to begin with? What did, what value is it to them?
It is, it isn't, that's the point. The question is, 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 do we, do we feel.
Is aborted.
Having this video is a benefit to the village, just like, and, and, you know, and, and I, personally, I, I think the showcasing of our river, this does have a value to our village. Would I do it every year? No. But this year, with the, with the amount of people that are expected to be in the, in the regatta, as well as the addition of the drone, this could be a very, very good opportunity for us. I personally think the regatta makes sense for us to film, at least this year. Do I feel the same way for the Lantern Night? I, I probably would, would say I don't, but that's my personal feeling.
Well, so if the village doesn't, isn't interested in having it recorded for any village purpose, and a group has an event they would like recorded, that's the circumstance under which we would expect them to pay.
Correct.
And I guess, and I guess my, my observation is that to film something that's beneficial to the village, isn't going out and filming something start to finish. It's going and getting maybe up to 30 minutes of a stock film and put that on the website. Here's a, here's a, you know, so I think that's a cost coverage, that we're not asking people to go out and film something for four hours, we're asking them to go out, set up, film for a half hour, you know, soup to nuts, and it's an hour of their time.
A half hour is four hours. It, it's, you know, it's, I, if, if we said, and I, and if we said, you know, Riverside TV, we want you to film this, they would probably sit somewhere on, you know, Maplewood and film the boats coming down, and they'd probably stay there for about 30 minutes. But they're, they gotta get there, they gotta set up, they gotta cut it, they gotta, they do it, so 30 minutes is four hours. So the question is, if, if we feel that this footage is worthwhile to have, we should direct TV to do it, because if we do not direct them to do it, the, the application to have it done will be pulled.
The application is from the Lions Club, though.
They will pull their application.
But we could film it anyway.
So if we don't agree to waive the, waive the fee, then will the Lions Club still be able to pay this $800?
They're not going to.
They're not going to, they're going to pull the application.
So it's sort of like a moot point?
Well, it was a formality. We could not have a discussion without an application.
President Ballerine?
Yes.
It sounds like to me what we should be considering is not a fee waiver, but rather just directing Riverside TV to film the event.
Exactly.
On behalf of the village.
And then the film, would it say hosted by the Lions Club?
No. The Lions Club would have nothing to do with it. It would be our direction to Riverside TV to film the regatta.
I think under those circumstances, I would be in support of it. I think if you're talking about putting it in terms of a fee waiver, and there's no standards that have been established as to who gets fee waivers and who doesn't, and under what circumstances, that's, that's not fair to the other groups in the village that do pay to have their videos produced, and that they allow Riverside TV to use them for whatever purpose, you know, it, you know, is necessary for promotion of the village. So given that, I am in support of directing Riverside TV to promote Riverside to the utmost best of their ability with the coverage of the regatta.
Thank you. Trustee Pollock?
Attorney Mars, can we take that action, given this agenda item?
Yeah, it's, it's characterized Riverside TV fee waiver request. The, the effect is the same, I'm fine with it.
So can I ask a process question?
Sure.
Who's deciding what gets filmed and what doesn't? Is it this board now, on an event-by-event basis?
No, it's the, the village manager.
This, yes. So this scenario was a little bit unique. I, what I would like to see as part of this work plan process that we're talking about with the commissions, is them really establishing what do, what are, is going to be our calendar for filming? Do I think, you know, if, if we're going to film the regatta, also the other question is, are we removing different pieces that show it's a Lions Club event? Because I don't want it to also be perceived as though we're filming for certain events for free and not for others, so that'll be kind of something else that I'll, I'll work with our TV. But really, the trux of it is, you know, we've had a history of certain events that we've always filmed or partnered with, you know, July 3rd and 4th, you know, RAW, those types of events, or there are own events in which we showcase. This is a little unique. This is a, a newer event that really isn't village-sponsored. They do the special event process where needed for, for certain events, other things are not, don't fall under our purview. So it, this was kind of in an area that didn't neatly fit in a box, so to speak, where I could say, yes, but if the board is supportive of filming it, I can obviously authorize Riverside TV staff to go out and, and to film it. I just, I think we need to create some clarity as to the vision of our future programming for Riverside TV and what, what the board would like to see as future events. I think we also need to figure out, because when we're filming an event, it can cost up to $800, and so that's one seasonal for one week. So then looking at it in that particular perspective, also recognizing that when we film for Riverside TV, that comes out, that money comes out of the general fund. So in establishing a calendar and a schedule for them, that becomes helpful from a budgetary standpoint, because if we realize that we've got to come in with a balanced budget and we've got to make certain cuts, Riverside TV has to get cuts too. And so that means the different special events, we've got to kind of right-size how, how much we're filming and what we're doing. So it limits the different opportunities then for some of these other videos.
So the, the mechanic that I have in my mind that I can get comfortable with is they withdraw the request to film, and we decide as a village that this is an event filming for promotional purposes for the village.
Correct.
They already filmed the Lantern Night.
They already filmed the Lantern Night, right. And we could, we can, and I, I, they, they will get the, as of now, they will get the invoice for the, for the, for the final billing of the, that Lantern Night unless you all take action contrary to that. And I, I sense there is a consensus here that there is no appetite for a fee waiver on the Lantern Night, but there is an appetite to direct Riverside TV to film the regatta. Am I speaking correctly?
Yes.
Works for me.
I agree with that, based on the mechanics. I, I like the Lantern Night, I'm sure it makes beautiful video, and I think that that's, has promotional value for Riverside. I just, the retroactive neighbor, nature of it and the mechanics and the optics of a waiver, I'm less comfortable with, so I would concur with trustee Hanon's approach here, that if, if we're taking an action to direct Riverside TV to film the regatta, I can get on board with that.
Okay. And, and I, and I really believe that this policy manual and the, and the work, the, 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 the asking that each commission to look forward and what they're going to do in the future, so we can make these, we can make the budget, will solve these problems, we won't have these issues, at least I hope so. So I believe we've, I believe we've gotten direction. Do we, we don't need to do anything, right? Okay.
Can we have a motion and a second to adjourn? And there is no need for an executive. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Trust, I'm, I'm sorry.
This is the first time I've ever gotten to exercise this option. This is a portion of the agenda.
I looked at the clock, it was 9:30.
I know, I know, I'll be quick.
Trustee Reports and Communications can.
So this is the first time I've ever done one of these. Usually it's Kristen, but I just wanted to let the community know that in connection with the Olmstead 200 events that are coming up, we are doing the Botanical Box Project for the library, but what's happening is that the seed is leading these wonderful seed hunts for the community that are absolutely free, and each seed hunt has a special guest nature guide. And our next event is coming up on Sunday, Father's Day, June 20th, and we have. And our next event is coming up on Sunday, Father's Day, June 20th, and we have an early childhood focus, which is going to be awesome. We have Ms. Nora from the library, who's going to be reading a seed-themed story, and then Susan Lyle is going to be our guest nature guide. She was the director of the RPC preschool for many years, and she's also a talented needlepoint embroidery artist. And we, we will be going on a great seed hunt, and every dad, every awesome dad that comes with their kid will get a special free gift from the seed to commemorate the day. So sign up at olmsteadsociety.org, and that's my two cents for the trustee report and communication.
You have a, a, a future in broadcast.
Thank you.
So if you need anyone for your voiceovers, just, you know who to call.
Anyone else? Yes, please. Please.
First, I wanted to take a moment to thank the lead artist, Erica Visana, and all of the volunteers and sponsors for putting together a wonderful RAW spectacle this year. I had a lovely conversation Sunday morning with Steve Marcus about the process of creating the three pieces and the inspiration behind them. They really captured the spirit and beauty of Riverside. I hope you all got to see it. I thought it was outstanding, and I just want to thank everybody that was a part of that. And I also would like to congratulate the 2020-2021 Riverside Junior Women's Charity Board, as it closes out another successful year, led by President Kelly Raymer, and despite this year's many challenges, the juniors managed to raise about $18,000 for local social service programs, veterans, the elderly, and kids in their communities here in Riverside. And it takes a lot of work to raise that much money in a normal year, so this is really a tremendous accomplishment and a true testament to the commitment of juniors' membership, as well as to the many sponsors and village residents who continued to support RJWC's mission of building a stronger community by addressing the needs of others. So congrats, juniors.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Anything else?
Just one more thing, I think we're all inside of the parade. The American Legion is going to provide over 1,000 flags for everyone to wave at the parade. They're also going to have a tank in the parade as well. Totally kidding on that one.
Okay. I was thinking about the streets.
But motion to adjourn, if we need one.
And before we go, I'd like to, again, wish Bill Gudzik the best in his retirement, and again, welcome our new assistant village manager, Ashley, to Riverside, and hope you're here for as long as Bill was. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gallagos, and a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Marsh Ozga, Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
No need for an executive session, so enjoy your evening and your 4th of July, because we will not have our meeting in the, the first meeting in July, so our next meeting will be the second meeting, so hope to see you all at the concert.